Situation that we have here is that we are remote. And this is the first time we've done this. And we may have a few situations that present themselves that we'll deal with. We're fortunate to have a number of people here who can be helpful to us. And we will try to move along as efficiently as we possibly can. The general procedure that we'll follow is the one that we followed in town meetings in the past. In that, we will ask for people that have questions on any of the articles that I read to identify themselves, ask the question, and we will try to answer that question. If there are delays or problems that arise, we will deal with them as they show themselves. So I think we can begin this meeting. And to begin with, in the past, the first three articles on the ballot have generally been voted on at the annual meeting. This year, those articles will be voted during either through absentee ballot or at the polls tomorrow. So I'd like to begin. The first article is, "To see if voters will authorize treasurer to receive taxes until they become delinquent." I need a little light here. Any questions on that?
That's actually Article Two. Sorry.
That was Article Two. Article One, "To hear reports of town officers and take action thereon." Any questions on that? Article Three, I'm getting some light here so I can see what I'm reading. Shall the Town of Paddle ratify and confirm the action taken at the October 29, 2019 special meeting authorizing construction of the town office building at an estimated cost of eighty, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and cover the cost thereof through the issuance of bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars? The expenditure of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the municipal office fund and the application for ninety thousand dollars from the designated surplus funds. Are there any questions on that article? Okay, we can go over to the article number four. The election of all officers required by law. Number five, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint a town clerk as provided in seventeen VSA slash twenty-six fifty-one E?
I have a question, Mr. Holbrook. This is Dave Lowe. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
So, Tim, some of us are confused about the fact that the ballot offers the opportunity to elect a town clerk, treasurer, and constable, but also ask us to vote on the articles to allow the select board to appoint. And I have two questions. One, could Rebecca, as the town liaison, explain the possible outcomes of those seemingly contradictory processes? And two, could a select board member explain if or why the board prefers the appointment process?
Very good. Rebecca, are you there?
I am here.
Could you answer?
So I can answer the question, absolutely. So if these roles become appointed, according to statute, there is forty-five days to appoint someone to the position. The, if the articles of appointment pass, it does not create a vacancy. So there is no requirement of the select board to post the position unless they choose to. It is at their discretion. But they do have forty-five days to make the appointment. Another question that came up before, which is why we made the presentation prior, is, what about job descriptions? And the job descriptions, whether they're appointed or elected, are the exact same. They're dictated by statute and they are handed to us. So we don't write new job descriptions when someone becomes appointed. So, and then the next part was to a select board member, so I'll pass that to whoever would like to speak on.
David, 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 does that answer your question? Is that your first question?
It does. And if I understand correctly, that means that if the article passes to a point, that will nullify the election. Is that correct?
The election of that person to that role, yes, it will. They will hold the position up to forty-five days.
David?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, we'll move on then to the second question.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sorry, I'm hand raised. Are we, do we not look taking raised hands?
I don't think we were done with the previous question.
Person, please. Please wait a minute.
Okay, hey, David, this is Bob Jarvis. I think I can answer the second part of that question. I think your question was, and correct me if I get it wrong, was, why does the board prefer appointed over elected? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so first I want to start with, that's not necessarily true. Different board members have different opinions about appointed or elected. We did all vote to put it on the ballot so that, so that the town could vote to make some of these positions elected versus, I mean, appointed versus elected. And I also want to point out to everyone, because this is very important, that the compensation for the, there's two different ballot articles per position or for many of the positions. And one of them would be elected or appointed. The other one would be changed to a salary versus a fee-based, a fee-based compensation package. So those are two separate articles. I'll take the town clerk as the example. Article Five would be elected or appointed for the town clerk. Article Six is whether or not that should move to a salary-based or, or remain as a fee-based. Different, and we all have different opinions on that. I think I've been vocal about my opinions, but I don't want to use this, this for campaigning for my position. So I won't tell you which one mine is, but, but I hope that answers your question. We put it out there to make sure that the town was choosing that. And then each of us have our own opinion.
Thank you very much. That answers my question.
Okay, now, do we have, if I'm reading this correctly, do we, do we have a question from a fellow named Jim?
Yes, we do.
All right, Jim, go ahead.
Just to kind of continue on with Dave's question. I'm a little concerned that all of these articles, and this one being the first one, but based on all of the ones that are there to appoint versus to elect, I'm very concerned that these were put on there without any kind of committee or any kind of a discussion or any part of this town coming together to find out, is this really what we want? I mean, it's kind of just throwing something out to the public and just say, vote here, yes, or vote here, no. And I, I'm just confused of why we're going in this direction without having discussions on anything like this. I'm very confused on why this came to the table. I mean, unfortunately, it may have been another last-minute item that comes to the ballot development by the select board. But I'm just wondering, were there any people involved, townspeople, that may have recommended this? Or is there any feelings that this is something that should happen? Or I'm at, I'm at a total loss with this whole process.
Very, thank you, thank you, Jim. Is there a select board member that would like to answer his question?
This is Harry or Jamie. Well, part of the process, I mean, first of all, there was something that came up through VLCT and as an option for the town. So anytime that we find out there's options out there available for the town, we try to put it out there for a democratic process for the town to vote on. The other part of it was to take and try to work with processes within the town office as a business. And if you're elected, you can choose whether to follow the process that's in place in the town office or your own accounting-type stuff, as long as it's within the statute. And so we were attempting, part of our reasoning was to attempt to streamline that process. So everybody's under the one system that we have here in the office. The Nemrick system. The other part, whether or not you want to allow the select board to appoint or whether you want the town to take and continue to elect the position. So I hope that.
We're changing the cameras around, so the person that's speaking will be on the, on the, on the screen. That's the confusion there. Go ahead.
Are you all, are you all done? I just wanted to add, you know, I appreciate what you said, Harry. I just, I just don't understand it. And if the LTC comes out with suggestions and certain things, I think they're meant to have a discussion and not meant to just come to the table and say, okay, let's just throw it out to the people. I don't think we've at all had a chance to discuss what we want to do with our positions. And I think that's what needs to come. It just seems that everything is happening by the board without any townspeople being involved in this whole situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, before, before you speak, just so that we clarify this, I assume we have a recording secretary. That was Jim Kosis, but I want to be sure that we have the proper name of the person that is asking the question. Now Jenny, do we have, did you want to ask? Excuse me?
I wanted to offer more, another answer to the same question.
Very good.
Okay, so, and just to answer Jim.
Bob, would you mind, just so that people that are watching this identify yourself for the first time around? This, this is the first time we've seen your face on the screen.
Bob Jarvis on the select board. And I just want to point out that we did actually start discussing this months ago. And if you remember back, some of these positions were on the ballot on previous elections as well. The board isn't coming and asking people to vote a certain way. We're putting it out for the townspeople to vote on. We did have things on our website that discussed what would happen if you voted the person in or that person in. And like I said at the beginning, each board member has their own opinions on it. I don't necessarily want everybody to vote yes across the board for, for putting all of these, for putting these positions to make them all appointed. Some I do, some I don't, and I'm sure other board members have different opinions. But just to be clear, we did start discussing this a while ago. And we went through the explanations of what would happen if, if, if the election happens or if, if it passes. What would happen if it, if it didn't pass? And, and we have some of that information available on the website as well.
Thank you, thank you, Bob. Jenny, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, please. Hi. Also, can I just let people know, when you're, if you're done, you can click on your hand and then it lowers your hand. Otherwise, your hand's going to be up the whole time. So just a little Zoom lesson. I just wanted to.
Just introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, yes, Jenny Dewar. I just, since these are on the ballot, I would like to just speak to this one and say that I really stand behind keeping Julie as an appoint, keeping our town clerk as an appointed position, not appointed, sorry, as an elected position. Because I think it's really important that the clerk is autonomous from the select board. So I'm just asking, I'm suggesting that people vote no to this and keep our clerk elected. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this particular article? If not, we will move on then to Article Six. Shall the town compensate the town clerk with a salary instead of any salutary fees allowed under thirty-two VSA one-four-zero-one? I see no hands. We'll move on.
We asked Julie.
Is Julie out there?
No.
Julie, would you like to speak on this?
We don't see everybody.
Julie's not there? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we can move on. Shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint a town treasurer as provided in seventeen VSA twenty-six fifty-one F? Number eight, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint a collector of delinquent taxes pursuant to seventeen VSA twenty-six fifty-one D A? Nine, shall the town compensate the delinquent tax collector with a salary instead of any salutary fee allowed under thirty-two VSA sixteen seventy-four? Number ten, shall the voters authorize elimination of the office of town lister in accordance with seventeen VSA twenty-six fifty-one C B and replace it with professionally qualified assessor who shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, proceed in the same discharge thereof, in the same manner, and be subject to the same liabilities as prescribed for listers or the board of listers under provision Title Thirty-two? Number eleven, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint a town constable as provided in seventeen VSA twenty-six fifty-one A? Twelve.
Oh, hold on.
Very good. Yeah, sorry, I missed it.
That's okay. This is Jenny Dewar again. On the contrary to that, to what I said about the clerk, I would urge people to vote yes to this one. Because if you look at our town report, our total constable or contract law enforcement is sixty-five thousand dollars a year. And the total constable expense is that, it's that budget line. We don't have a separate budget line for a constable. And if we were to elect a constable, we would run into real trouble with our sheriff contract. So, so I would encourage people to allow the select board to appoint and make that decision whether or not to appoint by voting yes to that article.
Thank you. Are there any other, any other comments on that article? If not, we'll move on then to twelve.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my raised hand raised. I just wanted to find out if the select board could just explain what will occur if there is a constable at the same time that we have a contract with the sheriff's department?
Nothing.
Do we, do we have a member of the select board that would like to respond to that?
I'd like to say a few words on that. We had a constable years ago.
This is Ronnie, would you just, first off, would you just introduce yourself?
I'm Bizad. Hi, Jim. We had a constable before, and it worked out fairly well. Then the people said that was good enough, but they wanted more police protection and whatever.
Excuse me, Ronnie, I'm afraid you'll have to take your mask off. It isn't, what you're saying isn't particularly clear with it on. Thank you.
But you're hearing it in?
Yeah, I got it in.
Make a long story short, we had a constable that worked very good for, for some time. Then the citizens wanted more law enforcement, more protection. They pretty much demanded that we go with something else. And the sheriffs, way back then, when we first got them, they had a program where you could get it for half price. Of course, we were asleep at the wheel and we didn't get it for half price like Shastberg and the other towns. But that got the seed planted. So then we turned around and we said, all right, now we're going to get the sheriffs. So we had the sheriff. So we sold our equipment, our radio, our gun, our car, this and that. Got rid of all that stuff. So in order to have a constable again, first of all, we'd have to equip them. And we'd have to get them hooked in with the state police through a radio system. We had that before with Harold Marshall and some of the other fellows. And it worked out fine. But it's, it's going backwards, and I think that that's not the way we should go at this point in time. I think the sheriffs, we got that. Let's try to work with them the best we can and, and keep the town safe.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Are there any? Rich?
Yeah, good evening. I was on the select board during that decision.
Identify yourself, please.
Rich Ryder, County resident. I was on the select board when that decision was made. And there was an issue with health insurance, liability insurance, the vehicle, the gun. And we, as Ronnie said, I agree with him. We got rid of all that, okay? And I think this would be a huge step backward for the Town of Paddle because the liability, if something goes wrong, and it's all over the news today, okay? If something goes wrong, the liability rests with the town on the constable. This way, it's with the sheriff's department. And I, I think that's a huge step backwards. So that's why I have to say, thank you.
Very good. Are there any other, just back, are there any other comments? If not, we'll move on to Article Twelve. Shall the town authorize cannabis retailers and integrate licensees in the town pursuant to seven VSA eight-six-three? Are there any, let's just go back to the one we had before. That was pretty easy to.
Trouble is, Tim, we can't see if the rest of these people raise their hands.
So here's how you have to go over here. Hold on, just doing a quick little Zoom thing here, guys. Now there's the whole other page, okay? So you have to go back and forth between these two pages. But usually the person that has their hand, their hand raised will be on that first page, okay? So right now, there's no one with their hand raised.
Okay. Very good. Are there any questions on that? I gather there are no questions on that article. Number thirteen, shall the Town of Paddle reinstate the positions of three internal auditors to serve the town with the same terms and in the same capacity as the past, including, but not limited to regularly auditing the books and preparing the end-of-year town report? Jim, do you have a question on that? I see.
Yes, yes, I do. First of all, first of all, thank you very much, Tim, for everything you're doing through this new process. I, I go back to my other question of why all of this is happening without any discussion. I mean, yes, this is coming back only because a year ago, at the last minute, something was put on the ballot to eliminate the auditors. And I don't think we were prepared after they were eliminated and the people voted to know how we're going to run this town financially. I mean, yes, we have a person taking care of financials and stuff like that. But we need internal auditors at this point to help out, to make sure that procedures are followed. And from what I can understand is that there is only a testing of external auditors. Yes, we've always had external auditors, but they're only checking a few items. They're not checking to make sure everything that happens is following our procedures. And an example, in the past three years, and Mike went over it at the last meeting, we've had changes in our personnel policies many times in the last two or three years. And I'm not even sure if things are being followed based on the current one that is signed by the select board a year and a half ago. So I think we need to start a committee to find out, what do we want this town to be made up of? How do we want things to proceed? Let the townspeople be a little more involved. And then we can sit down together and say, yes, this is what we want, or no, this is what we don't want. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any board member, let's see, we've got Steve.
Hold on. This is Harry Percy again.
Okay, wait, one second. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Harry.
The select board has taken all the information from the auditors that was given to us, the outside auditors. And that's why we've set in place the processes with Nemrick. And that's our checks and balances. They do the, they audit. And then there's also outside auditing done. yeah, Ellen taken, explaining the rest of it.
Do we have anybody else that would like to respond to that?
That would be me. So Jim, in response to your, what the external auditors audit, they pick several different invoices, et cetera, payroll, and they audit those. If they find anything that they don't agree with, don't like, the processes that were handled, that we handled internally, then they pick another twenty to fifty to a hundred. And they keep going until they're satisfied that they've checked everything and that we are in compliance with all laws and regulations. They don't just come in and do a few little checks and balances. I spend hours and hours pulling paperwork for the external auditors.
Thank you.
And the other, the other thing is, is we have updated and, and changed some of the policies in the office so that there are more checks and balances with everything that we do. So if something is to be changed, et cetera, there are processes in place. Okay? Hold on. Yep.
So as far as the position is concerned, what I would like to do is turn this over to Rebecca Dragon, our board liaison, to talk about what services Nemrick provides. Nemrick is not just our software company, but they also provide some consulting services that we've contracted with them.
Oh, sure. Okay, so Rebecca Dragon. And so Nemrick is providing, is providing monthly checks of the books, all journal entry approvals, all check reconciliations, all reconciliations, a monthly report of the state of the books to the select board. And again, they are not just a software company, although that's, they do have software. But they are actually primarily a consulting company. And what they do is they fill in for where we do not have division of duty in small, little rural towns like this where we have very low capacity. And we can't have division of duty. They actually come and provide that division of duty for, division of duty for us. And so we, we created a contract with Nemrick Consulting Services based on our, what have been identified as our procedural weaknesses and lack of capacity. So that's what that contract was developed on.
Thank you. Rebecca, it may be informative to the people that are watching this to have you explain your position in the board. It is a new position and we haven't, we haven't seen you before. Just a brief synopsis of your responsibilities and what you do.
Sure. So earlier in the year, in last summer, there was, two positions were created, actually, not just mine, but myself and the board liaison and the executive assistant. And the way those two job descriptions were determined were taking the town administrator job description and taking those roles and dividing them between two people. And basically what I do is I do everything content. So anything that has to do with writing a letter or calling someone at the state or negotiating something or making any kind of information, I talk to the press. I write grant proposals, all of that, it fell onto me. And the executive assistant does all of the administrative tasks managing personnel issues and files and, you know, HR, payroll, accounts payable. So I hope that explains it.
Very good. They just introduced yourself. Now I've got three names up on the top of my screen. We've got Jenny. Do you want to speak?
Yes, hi. So I have a couple of questions about, for the auditors. Why did the external auditor, oh shoot, where'd he go? Fee go from twelve thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars? Twelve thousand in nineteen-twenty, and now it's twenty thousand dollars? And Nemrick is also, I understand your description of all that, thank you. But it's a twenty thousand dollar budget ask as well, which is considerably more than what internal auditors would cost.
Do we have, do we have a select board member who'd like to answer that?
So Jenny, where are you? So with the Nemrick Consulting, are you looking under the listers or elsewhere?
No, I'm looking at the new budget line, Nemrick Consulting Services under total office expense. It's the second from the bottom.
Okay, just making sure that. Okay, and then the. Okay, and then the other one, the other question was in regards to the audit. The, every year, when, so every three years, we go out to bid for external auditors. Okay, so the audit fund had been, it's a fund. So there's carryover monies if we don't use it all. And the audit gets split between the road, the general, and the wastewater facility. So in the wastewater facility, I think it's a $1,200 expense line. And the road, I can't pull off the top of my head, but I think it's 2,000. And the difference is in the general, because the majority of the auditing is done in the general fund, because that's where everything takes place with all of us in the accounting area. Okay? So there was extra money put into the legal fund so that we would have money, because every year it goes up.
The professional audit fund. But, but why would it go up? That's like a 65% leap that from, from 2019, 20 of 12,000. Then last year, the budget was 17,000. We haven't seen the actual expense, the actual expense for 1920 was 12,000, as was budgeted. And now the budget is 20,000. It's under total, it's bottom of page 18.
Is the legal fund?
No, no, professional audit fund.
Sorry, audit fund, excuse me. Yes, because we don't know, because we haven't been out to bid for 2021 yet. That is an estimate, because it was at.
So what did we pay last year, since it's not, we don't know that actual yet?
I don't have that in front of me. I would have to get that for you, Jenny, because you, as you know, the FY '20 audit was just completed.
No, I know, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I can't pull that. I think it was 14,5, but I'm not exactly positive of that amount.
If we don't, if we don't have the best, those figures, I think it's advisable, Jenny, to get a hold with the treasurer after she has those reports. I don't, I don't like to speculate on figures.
I completely agree with you. Yeah, I just, I'm just pointing out the raises in the amount spent.
All right, is there anything else, Jenny?
I mean, it's just corresponding. I don't know if it has anything to do with it. I'm not suggesting it does. But in the, in tandem with not having internal auditors, that's all.
Okay, we can go on then. Christine Reed, did you have a question?
Well, I wanted to finish the answer on the previous one.
Okay, go ahead.
Just the, the other side of it was, what was the 20,000 in the consulting services for Nemrick? And that was an estimate that we put into the budget, because it was due, before we had the figures from Nemrick. So it's, it's definitely an overstatement. But we needed to get it into the budget, because we didn't know what it was going to be. So that was put in the budget before we got the, the contract and the estimate.
Thank you. Christine Reed, did we have, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. This is Kristin Reed. My question is specific to the Nemrick contract. I listened to the individual who was presenting, boy, a few weeks ago. Their, their services are pretty impressive. They obviously know what they're doing, and that's their business. If they look at the transactions, the processes and things going on monthly, do the townspeople, can the townspeople see what it is they're doing and what it is they're seeing and suggesting changes for? Thanks.
So the answer to that is absolutely, yes, yes, the townspeople will be able to see that. And that will come out in monthly reports. We can put them online.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll absolutely put them online. I do want to make the point also that there are things that Nemrick will do for us that internal auditors simply can't do. So this brings a lot more expertise and a lot more independence to that role.
Okay, and a quick follow up. It's really hard to hear you. So you need to be closer to the, the microphone. Thanks.
Christine, are you all set? Are you? All right, we can, we can move on. Steve, I've got, Steve's name is, with a hand up?
Yeah, this is actually Donna Lowson.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I just have a question, a yes or no question. Are internal auditors required or have specific municipal accounting experience? Yes or no?
No.
Let's just have just one person answer, please, from the board. Somebody take that question. Bob, you've been answering, why don't you do it?
Okay, this is Bob Jarvis. No, they are not required to have, to have any level of expertise. They would be elected.
Thank you. If there aren't, if there are no other questions, we'll move on. 14. Shall voters appropriate $1,128,545 for the general expenses of the town, of which $737,651.32 is to be raised by taxes and $76,343.68 from prior year's undesignated surplus funds? I still have Jim and Steve's hands up. Does that mean they have questions, or they just haven't taken them down?
I just put my hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
I, all I want to ask on this is not including in the ballot articles of the $268,000 and not including in the sur bond. According to my calculations, the, my taxes for just the general expenses will go up 7.8% for spending. And I just want to know, is that a valid percentage? And if not, you can get back to me. But it was something I published back in February. And I, I just feel that with all these little added items that are being put into the budget, it's a little high for me. Thank you.
Very good. Is there anybody that would like to answer that from the board?
I could take a stab at it.
Okay.
I'm going to try, I'm going to speak up a little bit here. Bob Jarvis, again. I'm just looking at what we appropriated last year and what we're appropriating this year. And it, and you're, you're right, Jim, it is higher, but it's higher by a little over 40,000. It was 692,715 to be raised by taxes last year. And it's 737,651. So what is that, $37,45,000 more than what we raised by taxes last year? So the, it is an increase. Of course, there's been some unforeseen, and there's been a lot of things that have gone on in the town. But I, I would prefer that it was heading in the other direction, of course. But that's, but just, I just want to put it in perspective when we're asking for the taxes, when you compare tax to tax from the last year to this year, that's what it looks like.
Thank you. We've go on. Jenny, are you up there again?
I am. Hi again, Jenny Doerr. There's several items on the budget that have gone up substantially. I mean, there's some that have gone down too, but there, our taxes in the past three years have gone up exponentially. So there are certain things, I'm just going to run down them. And I can, if you want to just jot down a list, you can answer each one, rather than taking forever for me to ask and answer, ask and answer. But there's a town newsletter for 6,000. I understand it's the idea, it's a nice idea behind it, but I don't know that now is the time to be adding that kind of budget. I think you can opt in for a mailed newsletter. And if you do opt in, you could pay $5 a year to receive your four newsletters, rather than the town being charged, the taxpayers being charged, when the majority of us can actually read it online. This is a question. Was the temporary clerk under the select board office, was that the clerk that was backup for our current clerk who was out? Is that, was that under the select board budget line? That's a question. And then I'll go down the rest of the ones I'm noticing.
I thought you were going to list all your questions.
I'll go ahead, I'll continue. But that one, I would like an, that's a specific question to, that I'm looking for an answer. But, but other budget lines I see going up. We have, the election wages have gone from 3,000 to 6,000 in the budget, when the actual in 1920 was 1925. So I'm not sure why that's jumping up $3,000 and 4,000 over what was paid last time. The Nemrick Contract Service under the listers has jumped, the budget has jumped from 6,000 to 18,000, when the actual in 1920 was 98,43. So that seems like an enormous jump, and I'm not sure why that would happen. The municipal office fund hasn't had a contribution to it. It's now in the budget is 25,000. I'm assuming that is because of the new town office. But I just want to point out that if we're already voting for a $600,000 bond and using 90,000 from the undesignated funds, that's actually asking for another 25,000, if I'm not incorrect. Ground maintenance, up from 35,000 last year to 43,000 this year, when the actual was 35,660. And those are just a few of the ones I pulled out.
All right. Would any board member like to briefly answer those?
Turning this over to our treasurer. Thank you.
So the temporary clerk under the selectman was temporary help. And that was someone that was hired to help the administrative assistant last year, last summer, for a short while. So it says clerk, it should say temporary help. The ground maintenance goes back out to bid. The gentleman that was doing it, was doing it for a very reasonable amount of money. All the other bids, when he was bidding, I can tell you, were a lot higher than his. So the ground maintenance line was increased, because we have to go to bid for that. The municipal office fund, we didn't budget anything last year, because we thought it would be built, or at least going. We did put some money in the budget, because we need money to be able to also move from office to the new office when it's built. And to, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, I, I was hoping you could just repeat what I was saying. I, I just want to make it clear that, that, that's the same fund that we use for the building that we're in, when we were doing mold remediation and a bunch of.
Let's, let's be sure that people can hear you. Why don't we, if, if you would, the treasurer would like to finish hers. Anybody else would like to chime in? That's, that's good. But it's hard to follow it when it's going back and forth.
Jenny, I lost track of what else you needed to know. I apologize.
I have the municipal office fund, which, yeah, you're saying, that was added back in when it was taken out last year, because I thought it would be built. So, so it is going towards the new town office, whether it's moving expenses or whatever. It's an additional ask to the 90,000 from the undesignated fund and the $600,000 bond, right?
So it's part of the budget.
Right, I understand. But it's still an ask from the taxpayers to, to approve the budget for that amount. So.
I'm sorry, this is Bob Jarvis. It's not for the building of the town office. It is to have a fund to draw.
Would you get a little bit closer to the microphone?
Oh, wow, okay. I am right next to it now.
Good.
So it's, it's, it's not for the building of the town office. It's the same fund that we were drawing from for years, when we were doing things like mold remediation or anything else in the current town office. So that's what that fund is for going forward.
Very good. Anything else, Jenny?
Yeah, the election wages were doubled.
That, the election wages were doubled due to several elections, and we have to pay the people that, every time we do an election?
So that's because of the extra elections this year? So that's
Correct.
behind on budget because of the extra elections? Got it, okay. And the Nemrick Contract Services from 6,000 to 18,000?
Nemrick Contract Services, which place are you? Under listers, that is for the gentleman from Nemrick that helps our listers. He is an assessor. He does help the listers when they have to go out to review, when someone does an addition, et cetera. When they have a question, they can contact him. He is the assist, he is the person assisting at this moment with the listers.
I understand what, thank you, Ellen. I, I do understand that that, that makes sense. But why has it jumped, why is it tripled? That's what I'm asking. The last year's budget was 6,000, this year is 18,000.
Correct.
That's what I was asking, why it's tripled?
Okay, so for the, for the Nemrick on the listing services, we use Nemrick for listing as well. Can everybody hear me? This is Bob Jarvis.
Keep close to the microphone, you'll be fine.
You're the perfect distance from the mic now.
All right, so that's good. So there's a couple of budget items in there that, that we need to pay attention to. For the 18,000, we use Nemrick for the listing services. And we're going to need that if Article 10 passes. If Article 10 passes, you're also not going to need the $33,000 that's budgeted towards the listers. So, so we kind of have to, we have to, we have to put in the budget both contingencies.
So that is, that's a contingency for, in case we have to hire a professional assessor?
I'm sorry, both options. I won't call it a contingency, because it's not a contingency fund.
So would, would, are you saying that the, the assessor, if we did not have the listers anymore? Sorry for all the questions, I've just really been poring over this budget. So if we don't have the listers anymore, then the professional assessor would only be 18,000?
We would have to use some of the 33,000. That's not correct.
So it's not, it's not canceling out the 33,000? Okay, all right. I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Tom Lekowski?
Yep, hi, I'm Tom Lekowski. And Bob, I just want to follow up on what you, you just said. So there's 33,000 in there for the listers, and there's another 18 in there for Nemrick. So in essence, you have both options fully funded. But wouldn't it be the right thing to do to only put in, say, the 33, because that would cover the 18 if you didn't have the 33? In other words, I think, don't you double?
Yeah, I understand the question. You're asking whether or not we're double dipping on the, on that. And it's actually, no. We do have 18,000 in for the professional assessor. We use them every year, regardless of whether or not.
Allocating.
Right, so we do need to allocate some, some, some amount to a professional assessor, even with the internal, with the internal listers. Now, if the list, if Article 10 passes, we can use some, most, or all of the $33,000 and add that to the 18 to hire the assessor, or to pay the assessing services for Nemrick. Nemrick would be the assessing services.
Tom, are you, are you happy with that?
So I don't have the numbers that Jenny had.
Well, it was.
No, I just, I'll follow up.
Oh, go ahead.
Jenny was talking about. She mentioned that 18 was triple, the 6 was, because of balances out. I just think there's more money there than the town needs to budget. And I think something ought to come out of one of those buckets, because, I don't know, just from hearing it for the first time, it seems like we're double paying or double budgeting. That's all. Thank you.
It's not double budgeting, but, but there is some, there is likely some extra in there, but it's certainly not double budgeting.
Okay, we can move on then.
Sorry, may I interrupt for one second? There are a bunch of questions in the chat about how to raise your hand. So there, there are clearly people on here who haven't done a lot of zooming. So I just want to, as a PSA, hover over the bottom of your screen over reactions. And then when you hit reactions, there's a bunch of emojis. And then underneath, it says raise hand. And then when you're finished talking, you could just click on your, the hand that's in your box to lower it.
Okay, we can, are there, I don't see any hands up. So I hope people that want to respond to questions or have a question are able to, to log in. Okay, Suzanne?
Hi.
Yes, Suzanne.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was going to ask a question earlier, but I was one of the ones that couldn't find the hand. Early, can I go back to something earlier, or do I have to wait to the end?
No, that's okay, go ahead.
I want to talk about the positions that are, that we're voting on to appointed. And I want to say that I don't think enough discussion has happened about the appointed positions, because how, how many years are you going to appoint them for? Who are they going to answer to? How much money are going to pay them? How is the tax collector going to now have patients, sick time, and a salary? I think it's a lot of. I think it's a lot of questions that nobody has, has asked. And I did talk to Mike Gardner a few weeks ago and it was before, it was only two or three weeks before the town meeting and I don't think there was enough at this town meeting, the original. I don't think enough discussion on it and I think people should vote against it until there's more, more time to discuss.
Thank you. Are there any other, any other, I don't see any other hands. And therefore we'll move, move on. Uh, 15, shall the voters appropriate, excuse me, $1,138,010 for the maintenance and construction of highways of the town of which 836,497.76 is to be raised by taxes and 165,512.24 from prior year undesignated surplus funds? Jim?
Yep, uh, just at this time, I'd just like to thank the road crew for doing an excellent job. Um, I have a little mud problem up here and I was just wondering if they were um, gonna be working on it. Just kidding. But um, we got some good guys that are working there and I think we've got a great guy, Joel, that is um, overseeing the whole project. And so I just wanted to give a um, cheer out to them and just let them know that we thank them very much. Unfortunately, um, a couple of years ago, our road did give them a nice little um, Christmas banquet. And unfortunately, with everything going on, we weren't able to do that, but they are in our thoughts. And um, once this is all over, I hope we can do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, and I certainly echo that. We live on a, I live on a back road with a hill and, and the town, it does an excellent job of keeping it open, particularly when we seem to have had a snowstorm for just about every other day during, during midwinter. So, so thank you, thank you, Jim. 16, shall the voters appropriate $11,000 towards the support of the Bennington Area Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice? Jim, I see your hand up. Are you, just haven't taken it down or would you like to comment? Very good. Number 17, shall the voters appropriate $500 for the support of the Bennington County Conservation District? Number 18, shall the voters appropriate $500 towards support Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse, a nonprofit agency? 19, shall the town of Powell vote to raise approximate and expend the sum of $2,000 for the support of the Bennington Free Clinic? 20, shall the voters appropriate $2,000 towards the support of Bennington Project Independence? 21, shall the town of Powell's vote to appropriate the sum of $1,800 to support the program and services of BRCO Community Action in southwestern Vermont for low-income persons? 21, shall the voters appropriate $600 for the support of services rendered to the town by the Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Volunteer Center? Anita, Amelia, sorry, Amelia Silver?
I'm sorry, uh, Tim, I didn't want to interrupt you while you're reading the articles. Just when you get to the end, I'd like to say something.
Would you like to comment on any of the ones that I've previously read?
No, I'm gonna lump them all in together.
Okay, thank you. Keep, keep your hand up and I'll, and uh, or maybe I'll call on you later or just make it, make it, make it obvious that you want to speak.
I'll keep my hand up.
Okay, that's good. Article 23, shall the voters appropriate $200 for the, of Vermont Greenup? 24, shall the voters appropriate $5,000 for the support of Oak Hill Children's Center? 25, shall the voters appropriate $60,000 towards the operation and maintenance of the Pinal, Ponal Fire Protective Association, Inc.? 26, shall the voters appropriate $50,000 for the Ponal Rescue Squad towards ambulance replacement, insurance, operation, and maintenance? 27, shall the voters appropriate for the operation and maintenance of the Ponal Valley Fire Department consisting of East Ponal Fire Company, Ponal Center Company, and the North Ponal Fire Company, the sum of $52,000? 28, shall the voters appropriate $19,500 towards the Ponal Valley Fire Department Fire Truck Equipment and Equipment Fund? 29, shall the town of Ponal vote to raise, appropriate and expend the sum of $2,000 for the support of Ponal Youth Baseball? 30, shall the voters appropriate $500 for the support of services rendered to the town by Pod Project Against Violent Encounters? Karen?
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Good, I'm Karen Delise and I'm, I would like to thank, on behalf of the Solomon Wright Public Library Board of Directors, um, the voters of Ponal for. Hold on one second, please. Mike Cutler from Cat TV, can you please call me on my cell phone, which you have? So we can work that out.
Can I try this one more time?
Of course, Karen, I just want to make.
I thought it was, I think, I don't know if it was me because my phone, I had a, somebody called me on my phone. It was one of those calls?
No.
And then the music started.
No, no, it's not. Somebody else was in here named Jessica and they were unmuted playing that music, so.
Oh, okay, thank God. Let me start again. So I'm, I'm, I'm Karen Delise and I'm talking on behalf of the Solomon Wright Public Library Board of Directors and I want to thank the voters of Ponal for approving two line items last year um, on the ballot to support the general budget of the library and to assist with the sal, salary of a part-time librarian. We would also like to thank the many townspeople who have supported the library through monetary gifts and volunteering throughout this very difficult year. Um, last January, we began renovations on the original library building space through a generous donation from George and Helen Renner and a number of caring individuals in this community. And as the pandemic hit, um, Scott Wells, who's a local contractor, um, fought through with, with the help of many town tradesmen and finished the project. The library had an open house in October following COVID guidelines to show off the beautiful new space. Um, throughout the library shutdown, our librarian Jen Ryan had offered curb, curbside service and home delivery of materials. But we were informed by Jen just today that the library will reopen on Monday, April 5th, following COVID guidelines under the Vermont Library Association. And the hours of the reopening can be found in the library's web, webpage. Again, this year, the board is asking that citizens of Ponal support our library. It is our hope that the library will become a community center, offering a variety of programming to meet the needs of our diverse population. And again, thank you for your continued support. Okay.
Thank you, I'd like to add a personal note on that, that the library has been a great institution for the town of Ponal, particularly during these difficult times.
Yes.
They've been very supportive in, in being, and getting, making sure that books are available to people that, that want them and need them to be part of their life. And they've been, have been able to pick up the books outside and it's, it's been a great thing. The other thing that's been a great advantage is the wifi reception that people get from going down there. I know a number of people that have uh, made practically daily trips down there because they don't get the reception at their home. So thank you.
Thank you.
Article 31, shall the voters appropriate $15,000 for operation maintenance of the, of the Solomon Wright Library? 32, shall the voters appropriate $15,000 towards the support of a director for the Solomon Wright Public Library? 33, shall the voters appropriate $1,200 for the support of services rendered that by the southwestern Vermont Area Council on Aging? 34, shall the voters appropriate $5,000 towards support of Sunrise Family Resource Center, a nonprofit agency? 35, shall the voters appropriate $2,500 towards the support of the program and services rendered to the town by the Tutorial Center? 36, shall the voters appropriate $440,000 for the support of disabled Vermonters by the Vermont Center for Independent Living? 37, shall the voters of Ponal vote to raise, appropriate and expend the sum of $2,000 for the support of the Ponal Valley Swinging Seniors to provide services to residents of the town? 38, shall the.
Excuse me, excuse me. Kristen Reed, just a quick question, my ignorance of the Ponal Valley Swing Seniors and I didn't see anything in the book this year. Does anyone on the line know what they do?
Can anybody help us?
Thanks.
Well, they do, so since COVID has taken over, um, they have been unable to meet. They usually meet a couple of times a week and have lunch together. Um, and do different things here in Ponal, but with COVID, they have been unable to meet. So that is most likely why you don't see a write-up from them either because they have been unable to partake in their social events, but hope to return to that soon.
Thank you.
Just a question on the swing and seniors. They, I know they meet at the Ponal Center Firehouse. Do they have to give the money that, to use the firehouse to the fireman or to the town?
No, I don't believe so. I think it's for their use only.
Do we have a, anybody could respond to that with a definite answer? Mike?
Sue, I can, I can speak from years past. I don't, I don't know what happens now, but when I was involved in the fire department, um, no, they, they did not give um, any of their money received from the town to the fire department. That was solely 100% for their functions in whatever they did.
Same way.
And I, and I'm sure it's still the same way. Ellen's the treasurer.
So they use it for trips and things like that, that they do for their activities?
That, that's right, and I know that um, they, they did a trip. I, I think one of the last trips they did, that they did actually was a couple of years ago, pre-COVID. Um, I know they went to Lake George.
I just wants to go on forever. Whoops.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Does that answer your question, Suzanne?
Somebody had told me a couple of weeks ago that they used the money to pay the fire department and I didn't think that was true.
It isn't. Jim, I, do I see your hand up?
Yes, I, I basically just want to make sure everyone understands that uh, this Ponal Valley Swing Seniors is really uh, an organization for any senior citizen in Ponal. Um, they do meet at the firehouse because there was a different group that met where the um, schoolhouse is that was, is being moved over for the town office. So it is a very valid organization for any senior citizens in Ponal that would like to just gather with other senior citizens. They do have their luncheons and stuff like that, unfortunately not now. Um, they do try to organize trips. I'm sure this money is to, gonna help them kind of subsidize some of their activities. They're the ones that really do some of the um, tag sales that might be out front, um, in front of the firehouse. But, so I don't want anyone to think that this is just a, a group of people that are just asking for monies. This is a citizens-organized um, group from Ponal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, I'd like to speak, this is Ellen Schremer.
Sure.
So they also purchase their own insurance. So the, some of their money goes to that for, for the use. They have to pay for insurance to use the firehouse. So they purchased their own. They do not pay the firehouse for any use, though.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We can, we can move on then?
Yeah.
Okay, shall the voters appropriate $20,000 towards the Ponal Valley Fire Department Station Building Fund?
I'd also like to speak for Ponal Valley Fire Department.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so I am the treasurer for them and the guys um, all want to thank you for their support over this past several years and uh, hope that you will continue to support the Ponal Valley Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. 39, shall the town of Ponal vote to continue exempt the Ponal Valley Rescue Squad and the Ponal Volunteer Fire Department's property tax on the following parcels for a period of no more than five years commencing with grand list year starting April 1st, 2021 and ending March 31st, 2026? Ponal Rescue Guard Building and Land at 22 Lad Road and Firehouse and land located at 253 Route 346, 1317 Route 346, 2854 South Stream Road and 2827 North Ponal Road? Amelia Silver, do you still have something to say?
Yes, I do, thank you, Tim.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to uh, put in my plug for various of the uh, social services agencies that have asked for our support again this year and have asked in years past. Uh, Project Against Violent Encounters, Sunrise Family Resource Center, Visiting Nurses Association, Bennington Project Independence, just to name a few. Uh, these organizations operate on shoestring budgets and continue to provide really, really essential support uh, to our families here in Ponal. The home visiting services that VNA and that Sunrise provide uh, for people who really, really need access to social services have been kind of unflagging. And I'm very proud that I was uh, I was a member of the Sunrise team for a number of years and I admire their work. And um, I know that people are feeling that budgets are tight and that uh, maybe we want to cut, cut some things out. I know that Bob Jarvis had suggested that we think long and hard about what we support and I, I think that generally that's a good idea. Uh, but Ponal, for all of its positive energy and spirit of rejuvenation, is a poor town that really, really needs these social services. So if you're thinking about cutting things, don't cut those supports that, that our town really, really has relied on and that we really need. Uh, and also support any school, Oak Hill, and also the library, which is so great. A library is a heart and soul of a town. Thanks so much. That's it.
Thank you. Steve?
Hi, this is Donna Lozon again. I just wanted to make a comment that I hope Ponal voters give their support to our fire and rescue folks. Um, you know, we saw their commitment during the racetrack fire and, you know, as well as some of the unfortunate car accidents and situations that we've had, especially over the last year. And I really think that they deserve our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, did you have anything else you wanted to?
Yes, I did. I, I agree with, with Amy and Donna on both things and I want to second that with everybody. But I do have a question on Article 39 that you read. Um, shall the town of Ponal vote to continue to exempt the Ponal Volunteer Rescue Squad and fire departments? Is that something that we have to do every four or five years? It says continue to do, have we been doing that in the past? Does it run out in five years or can somebody explain that?
Anybody like to do that?
We've been doing it since 2016.
No, every five years we do it.
Hey, every five years the treasurer states that we have.
The treasurer would like to respond to that. Why don't you give a little explanation?
I actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond, I'm gonna respond to that because I helped get those on the
Okay.
Years, we are required to ask the voters' approval to maintain their not-for-profit status. It's something, the last time we did it was 2016. They're due again. So that's it. It's a, it's a
So it's something that's required by the state?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And Jenny, do you have something to add? I see your hand up.
Yes, sorry. Jenny Dewar, I just wanted to thank Amy for saying that and just point out that all of those organizations also do do a fair amount or a lot of fundraising. So they're not just relying on our contributions with the taxes. And just a little shout out to the library, especially with all the COVID going on and families who don't have internet at their own home, that they can go to the library and access the internet even if they're sitting outside in the parking lot. So it really is a very, very valuable asset to the community. And if people aren't aware, there is also free internet. Thank you to the CUD rep, Caitlin Randall, for, outside of the fire station on North Ponal Road. So you can go in that parking lot and also access internet. So please do support these organizations.
Tom Wukowski?
Yeah, hi. This, back, back to article thirty-nine. Rebecca, I've been affiliated with other nonprofits in Vermont and I've never had, or those organizations have never had to go back or expect the town to do something like that every five years. And I'm wondering if there's something that we could look into that maybe once you grant nonprofit status to the fire department or whoever, that that's until you cancel it. Because, as I said, I haven't experienced that in the past and I've worked for other nonprofits. So maybe it's something the town could look into so that it can be done once and for all and not
It's to exempt their property taxes?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I can look into that for sure. My understanding and what I was told, I believe the VLCT is the one who told me this, is that it's, it's every five years, if the town has to ask the voters if they're willing to exempt the property taxes. It's not about their not-for-profit status. But I'll look into, I can ask the question, but I do believe it was the VLCT that gave me
But with my most recent experiences at the hospital and, you know, that's, it's just not for, they don't pay taxes and you don't have to do anything every five years or 10 years. So anyway, I'd be happy to talk to you more about that, but it'd be nice to get it done once and for all.
Correct. Well, I don't know if that's possible. The VLCT said something else, but I'll send the question out, not tomorrow, but this week.
Okay.
It is, it is just about the property taxes.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I've got Suzanne is
Yeah.
Yeah, and is still up. Are you, are you?
Yes. It just, it seems funny to me that the rescue squads and the fire departments have to be exempt every five years and other things like the Ponal Legion and other things don't. It just seems funny that it's, it's just our, our squads and town services that has to be renewed every year.
Well, it's
I think it'd be nice if, if somebody did check into that.
Right. I think Rebecca has already said that she would do that, so we'll have an answer on that very soon. But thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, questions that are to be directed to the board at this time?
Yeah, just Harry Percy again. I just want to reiterate for article thirty-eight for the fire department, the building fund. People, we go there and vote, so people see the condition of the building as far as the age and everything else. The other thing to keep in mind is that if we upgrade the station, then we don't have to take in special order trucks to fit the station. So therefore we can save some money there in the future when purchasing future equipment for our town. Just want to throw that out there for the guys that are busting their butt for us.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments that people would like to make? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Tim Holbrook, I don't know how to raise my hand, but I'm wanting to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
I, I, I don't think any town meeting in this longstanding Vermont tradition should ever pass by without our taking the time to thank all of the town officials who work so hard on our behalf and the select board members. Sometimes it's got to be a thankless task to be involved in advocating and supporting and promoting things that matter to the community. So no matter if we're on one side or the other, I hope we can all take the time to tip our hats to all of you who have worked so hard on, on behalf of the community for the last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well said. Thank you.
Okay, we have a, we have a few more hands up here. Jim Neil, oh, Jim Winchester. Jim, are you there? Neil?
Looks like he's muted.
Okay. Jim, can you mute? Unmute yourself, I'm sorry. Give it a try and hopefully you can, you can do that. We miss seeing you, hearing you.
He might be there now.
Jim, are you there?
Here he is.
Oh, yes. Harry.
Hey.
I just want to say something. I just want to, Jim Winchester, I just had the use of the Ponal Rescue Squad for a problem and I want to thank their professionalism. And all you people, I just want to say, Dave, the things you just said, Dave, we live in a pretty good place. And it's, thank you.
Thank you, Jim, as always. If there are, are no other questions, I would accept a motion to adjourn this town meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn, Angie?
You have a second?
Oh, wait one second. Wait one second. Julie wants to ask a question.
No, she's not. She wants me to, she asked me to, she's texting me. And she wants me to remind everyone to please bring your ballots with you to the polls. If you didn't get one, Jamie, then you go and you'll get one at the polls. And also, I want to let everyone know that myself, Tim, our new executive assistant, and Megan, our new administrative assistant, are all going to be at the polls with an information table tomorrow. We're going to have information about all different kinds of town business and you can stop in and ask us questions. We're not campaigning for anything. We're not going to tell you how to vote, but we can answer any questions about town business you may have. We'll have a copy of the audit. And the polls are open from 10 to 7.
Thank you. We have a motion and it's been seconded and I assume that all people will say aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.